Bye.
Just about three for a second. No. Too light of an agenda.
Yeah, I was like.
Regular me.
My daughter went.
What's new?
Yeah. Those are first time.
They turn on something.
Well, it's three in the morning.
Okay.
Just a crack.
Yeah, I do because the kids were really gonna learn how to hunt station till their parents. Learn how to buck it up and sit right cold. They do it because it's MBA weekend and everybody's off. And it's warm. There're gonna be a bunch of hunters. And they shouldn't go hunting.
I never got off.
I never got off. I've been dragging gunners since he was five.
And you're taking roach.
Add an extra layer, yeah.
I get it. Everybody's off for four days. Time for them to do stuff, you know, and what better way? By in two weeks, there's not gonna be a single year out there. That's what drives me crazy.
Because they're so scared right now.
You gotta do cadavers, the whole nine yards.
Tracked and hunted. Yeah, I'm a little.
She'll follow that right away. The old hunters type shoes.
They don't go around. And what's, what place that called right now, so.
She did five years in the SCU and. For the year. And went to Nebraska for now. The dentist. And that's what her. All right, six o'clock, we'll call a meeting order. Begin dispense with the pledge of allegiance unless there is an objection. Christina, you've got role?
Yes.
Moving on to, I need approval of the agenda. And before we approve the agenda, would like to move. G.
Correct.
To the top of the list.
Top of the whole business. Okay.
All group of next agenda.
Motion on the second, is there any discussion? All's in favor?
I.
Close. This is. Okay. Whole business, got it?
Yes. Welcome.
Just like that.
Just like that.
There it is.
So I brought this to the council at the last meeting. Kinda couldn't attend at that point, so he's here for my session. These are the two mores that were in your packet beginning of October that I reported on Kevin located. That was discussed at the previous work session that would work good for the golf course. And he's here to answer any questions or provide more insight about those two.
Prices on?
The two thousand and two is going to be approximately seventeen thousand and the two thousand seven is going to be approximately eighteen thousand.
Yeah.
They belong to high school slash technical college combination.
Both of them?
Yeah. And the technical college mechanics department was in charge of all the maintenance on from the time they got. I actually asked about service logs on them and because they were through an auction company, they weren't willing to.
Oh. Okay.
So you have these sitting at your place?
I do.
Yeah, so. What do you think is the best one for the golf course?
I can't honestly answer that question yet. They're both exactly the same machine except for. The two thousand two is a sixteen hundred turbo, the two thousand seven is a sixteen hundred turbo two. All that means is the newer one is just a little updated version of it. But I can't tell you condition wise a hundred percent yet. I have not had the opportunity to do much of anything. One of them I just jumped on and went and pulled a little bit with it. The other one I just go with parking because I just didn't have time to do anything. I, when I say approximately seventeen thousand and nineteen thousand, I'm not just gonna load it on a trailer and go down for that to golf course. I don't do that sort of thing. I go through them and make sure they're ready. And there doesn't appear to be a bunch of stuff needs to be done, but don't know that, no idea.
They were both on by the same. Place? Wondering why everybody popped on the one and up the other.
No idea. Can't answer that one.
We said it was a tech college and.
High school, the tech college.
So one park, one place, one park together, maybe one they have less use. Because it had less property?
Nick, realistically with your experience, how much, how many more hours do you think one of these issues can go for you? That I want to be secure, right?
Well, like you, before you found these ones at this bulk mileage, two thousand twenty-five hundred is not reasonable if it's well named gym.
Oh, okay.
They're built pretty big. We have one at the school that I use and I agree. The difference between them, do they both have cruise controllers? Does the newer one have the cruise control and?
I believe the newer one that got cruised is the older one.
Yes, if there's just minor differences.
Minor difference. Once they went to the.
Newer switches and stuff.
Yeah, little different style of switches, little different air hood on the top of the hood and you know that, it's just. Minor.
My biggest concern about a mower and I don't know enough about any of them is our terrain of the golf course is so hilly. But that's always been a big wear on a lot of the machines that we've had out there. And no matter where we find a machine, it's like it's always doing something flat. You know, like an airport or, you know, whatever. And my biggest concern is like Nick said, you said we could get maybe twenty-five hundred hours out of a good one. Is that realistic even with as hilly as our courses?
Well, first of all, I mean, one of the reasons why, in my opinion, the turbo and the turbo two is important because of course. They allow more horsepower. The other thing is they're four wheel track machines that design for pulling themselves around. And one of the things too that I think a machine like this really shines on is when you have a little bit of uneven grain of decks. Because there's three different decks, they follow the ground a little better.
And we have uneven. Okay.
And they do have a low and high speed turtle and rabbit, so a turtle on you obviously on hill. Basically a two thousand dollar difference, you know?
Yeah.
Roughly.
Yeah, and that's an approximate deal, you know, I, I. I'm just not willing to firm that up fully until I have them so that they would be ready to go. And the one I would have a difference to me either way. Except for that, I guess, once I go through them and I know condition wise, you know, if there's something I that I. Don't like as good of a one or the other, I would wanna certainly disclose that because it's what you do. And if I felt as though that's two thousand dollars is well worth it because of the differences I've wanted to go there.
Well, yeah, he's all for the golf course.
I suppose that everyone agrees all heck we would pay for it, right? That would be the next question.
Well.
Yeah.
We authorized a twenty thousand dollar.
Well.
Like I did, ready to check.
I'd like it. I mean, there's a couple, there's a couple of platforms that the, that the city could use. It's revolving loan fund that it has is, is de-stated as funding that could be used for it. Um, it, it has an opportunity here in the near future to also de-state as some of its restricted funding to which will bring. The unrestricted balance up. But if it's for general purpose use, it doesn't have to be a loan to the city if the city chose. To just use that money for this process. Max, you might remember when the cart shed was built. It did, it created its own loan for itself to pay its, to pay that back, but that was, you know, fifty-five plus thousand dollars. Less than half that, so that is a consideration the council could make if it didn't want to have to loan itself money. It wouldn't have to with that de-stated as funding. On the other option of course is. To loan itself. That way you wouldn't have it, but I. We just went over the budget today. So we've got, you know, considering all of being on a future debt for the golf course.
I'm assuming you paid taxes on it, whereas the city would have bought it outright, we wouldn't have to pay taxes, right?
They would, we'd be taxed. I have a tax for resales. No, I don't. No, that's, that's. You know, I don't know if I have to charge you taxes, whether it's me or not, but you don't have to pay any taxes that I could have had to have paid in that resales. At least, you say that.
But technically because the unit would not be used or paid for out of the general fund, Nick, then sales tax has to be paid.
Yeah, that's what I kinda wondered.
Yeah, even though, even though the golf course is designated, that designated now as a special revenue fund and not an enterprise fund, it still pays sales tax.
But at least it's not a help.
Yeah. Right, well, you would just follow that over to whatever, right?
Yeah, true, if I did have to pay then, then. Because I paid that, I don't have to necessarily take the two under par. I can blame the governor.
So these are our two options. Basically what we're looking at. And now.
Plus something better comes along.
There's a third option. Absolutely, you can keep looking.
Yep.
And also at least to somebody else who makes money. No.
So with that in mind. You know, how fast do we want to work?
You said you were gonna go over them and give us.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I, I guess I'm not prepared to let either one of them go until I've gone through. And it's been a little bit lately, so it's not like it's gonna be next week.
Would you be willing to give us an update, Kevin? Give the council an update for, or I mean, after you go up?
Oh, yes.
Going through them?
Yes, I would definitely do that.
Do you need a down on it?
As far as a down payment?
Yeah.
When that, when we get it figured out, we'll decide if you want one or don't want one, then we'll get a down, a big one.
Okay, yeah, that'd be a.
I would encourage the council to at least, you know, make a decision if they would, would prefer to have Kevin sell the four to the old seven. So that I had a direction of what funding.
Can, can I, I, I'd love to go there.
Oh, okay.
Reason being is that if I find that the old two isn't as good as the old seven or vice versa, then you've chosen one of them.
Okay. I appreciate that.
Yes, I.
Yeah, that's.
It doesn't matter, I gotta get them both ready before I'm gonna sell either one of them.
Okay.
So we'll wait for your update.
Yeah. So I just, my main thing is that I wanted to be sure that people knew that. I've had a couple of machines that I think are the right machines for what we're doing and. And, you know, get the ball rolling and make sure everybody's on the same page with that deal. And if I have a feeling that we're not on the same page, I'm gonna find a home for them. You know, and I don't think that that would be what we wanna do here. I think we should have a home for one of them pretty easily.
So there'd be, there'd be no action, most of November meeting until, or any meeting until we hear from Mark.
Not until you're helping. Rice fishing or. You might have to wait.
We'll wait for you.
Let's just say I'm carrying your client for a while.
All right.
Very good.
Thank you, Kevin.
Put me out of your hair.
Thank you, sir.
You're back.
So then we're gonna circle back to what was A.
Yes.
I submitted the mirroring proposal that the council authorized in October. Back to Whit Seth and to Angela Baca Boy from USDA. There was some email conversation about agreement. Legalities, but it sounds like that is. Covered.
Basically, she thought it was an amendment to the agreement and actually it was already in the agreement because it's just additional service.
Exactly.
It's now a chain.
So as soon as Steve's company gets those done. Perfect, then those will get forwarded on to USDA for Angela's team and state to review. And that's done, I'll report back.
Our hopes in that scheduling is that we give them done this week, we give them in Angela's hands, he gives it to the state architect and gets to review it. We would like to get it out on the streets in December, so when it happens in January available.
Oh.
That is what I, in my mind for giving you the best pricing. Early winter pricing for next spring work. That makes sense. It all depends on the review again. Last time it took more than twelve weeks. And this time it shouldn't take.
Yeah, and she's, she's assured of hope that it shouldn't take long, so barring deer season doesn't slow, I wouldn't know.
We were kinda pushing for January dead anyway. That's, yeah.
Yeah.
I thought. Yeah, what I'm getting at is we're right on schedule, but it's still up to the center of time. The same review.
And I thought I've been. Had touched it again by Cross Anderson, they're uppers and I know they're gonna bid on this project. I don't know who else is, but I know Cross is.
I was looking, I, so that we don't just have two bidders like on the other project.
We're going up for there.
I should have brought that project. I think I have five on the list. That I felt are, are good, competent, capable contractors and I talked to others in my office and there's others that we can help, yeah, that's also. Kraus Anderson was one. Construction engineers also, the Luigi Grant forces and others. Hawk Construction out of Grand Rapids.
Yep.
Norson out of Brainerd. Who's my fifth one?
Is there somebody?
Yeah, I'm sure there is. I, I thought I had five, but we're gonna try to send, you know, at least call these people and say, hey. We've got this project, are you interested? Oh, look at it, check it out, we'd like to see a bit. And, you know, at least, I don't have any problem direct calling some of these people, we see if they're. What about that company of a clear book?
What's that?
I was talking to somebody, they mentioned Clearbrook. That, they're really big. I can't think of the name of the company. Big union company. When you said Clearbrook, I did, yes, I knew. We're, we're gonna, we're gonna get this out to a lot of people. And that's local and it's a big company and they're, they're really good. All the ones I mentioned are all good sized, very capable companies, they're not just a guy in a pickup. Yeah, I know. So, yeah, so. And there's gonna be a lot of people that are gonna see this and are gonna be interested, I think. You know, it's a pretty substantial project.
Is it ready? Or Greg Thomas?
You, I think you know what I'm talking about. I, I was talking to someone, they mentioned Clearbrook also, and then I forgot the name of the company. Well, that would just, you know, that's, that were all local boys from around here. Yeah. And that would be upping that.
Yeah, it's always nice when we can get local people working.
You know, within a hundred miles, I mean. It's small. Just think of them. With money in this.
Anything else next?
Do we need to approve the, or so we don't need to approve them?
What? Of what?
The additional funding.
And did that last?
You mean.
For that project?
Right.
Then you're excited.
I'm missing what you're talking about.
But there was a. A reason why, other than that, that Steve was here.
He is.
There is.
Yeah, he's here on the, on the redevelopment project. But.
Okay, so. Oh, that's fine.
Okay.
We'll go through the rest of it.
Okay.
That's what I was talking about.
No, yes, that's why you're here.
Yeah, okay.
One of these are, I know we. Dollar amounts are so similar.
So liquor store, is that good?
Yes, go ahead.
All right, so I've submitted in the packet, the project funding after the last pay application from Cross Anderson where the balance is at. And then the last two weekly updates from. Cross Anderson on the progress of the building. Melissa's here to answer any questions or report anything further. And that's pretty much all I have. Those are going really well.
They are.
Just kitchen is.
Well.
Timeline is so tight.
That put me in a problem that we had, kinda pushed everything back. What are we gonna have?
We have to have the flooring in the kitchen and behind the bar done still, the same contractor that did the. That's doing that to the flooring and then you walk in, your cooler, so he's getting remobilized in next Monday. So the liquor store is gonna be shut down on Sunday, coming Sunday. Everything's getting moved out of the bar. And then he's coming in and demos being done Monday morning. Stop me if I'm wrong with my timing, and then the flooring guy's gonna start coming in, so the bar itself, it's gonna be closed Monday first.
We are looking at probably not opening until Friday afternoon. But the off sale.
The liquor store itself will be open.
Full on open.
Full on open, the bar will have to be shut down from the thirty first to probably not open until that Friday afternoon. But this Sunday, they just said the liquor store is. Will be open through Saturday of this weekend, closed on Sunday.
And then the bar will be closed.
From the bar, first, from Sunday the thirty first to probably that Thursday.
Friday morning, Friday afternoon.
Then we have to bring all the equipment back in and get it set back in the bar. To utilize the bar, but this, once this portion is done. Then all that old flooring that's behind the bar that has been an MDH issue for a very long time will be completely gone and updated. Um, the kitchen will be ready to move. In all of its stuff, pretty much, right?
Everything that I have.
That you have in.
That I have will get moved in that week.
Yep, and then those, those pieces will finally start being able to get utilized. So this is the last hiccup we had, it's just that the sewer lines, the compromised sewer line set us back to what we even have, Melissa said. So it's not ideal, we understand that. Um, we would prefer to be open full on both sides by the first day, you know, my doer season, but it's just not working that way. The nice thing is, is that the store itself is open full on and we're receiving great.
You know.
Head over tails right now.
It could be worse.
Oh, my, yes.
I mean, for the hiccup too bad there.
Yeah. Yeah, if you haven't been in the store itself yet, I seriously encourage you just to walk in.
You'll never.
The same place.
First step in and stop and look like.
Yeah. Yep. The, cleaning the logs, the older section was definitely a plus. I'm glad it's more cohesive as prior to the paint on the logs inside. You could tell there was a disconnect between the old section and the new section, even though the flooring even, you know, was throughout. But everything is much eerily, it's more open, it's easier to shop. Your distributors really like having that, that, that north door. It's, it's so far so good.
That's amazing.
I think it's a win. Just wanna get it finished.
I did wanna give you an update on the, we decided to do that other cooler door on our existing walk-in cooler. That door is now not going to be available till the number seven. Just as an update.
That's the north on the old.
That's the north end door of the old.
That's.
And I did hear an ad on the radio.
Yes.
For the fun.
We heard, our ad is being well played.
So. Yep, the K D Y Halloween party, the goose cakes and everything else, so. Want to say I was happy to hear that. Advertising.
You guys are giving a, a, by a. Get some deals on K D Y, K D Y well on. Yeah, I heard a couple of them.
Yeah, we had some radio promotions, so we decided that we might as well promote some upcoming events. We'll probably use it again once the kitchen actually up and going, just to let remind everybody, hey, we're back on track.
Yes, we're getting seven bucks.
Yep, for those big deals, yeah.
Big deals, yeah.
Yep, you get, see quite a few of those, so it's, it's good. We're seeing a lot of movement, actually.
Good, all right.
Awesome.
Anything else on the fun?
Oh, no. Kitchen and bar floor. We were gonna try and do a little something to get the kitchen going, but we do have to have an inspection before we can actually open the kitchen. But we have been in contact with Cassandra. And she is more than willing to accommodate us if we can go forward even before we can actually get all the equipment in. Because she is more than willing to come up and give us. An onsite inspection to get us going and then once it's all finalized and said and done, she'll have to come back and do another full. Actual full inspection. But she would be willing to come up if, if per se. The flat top and the fridge are there, at least this way we can run hamburgers and. No chips, not necessarily fries because my fryers are back ordered, but. If comes to where we could get into the kitchen, she'd be more than willing to come up and give us an early inspection to at least get. That much, something going for us.
That's, that's true.
But.
She's very flexible.
It's hard to say what we're gonna be able to do going forward with the floor rate nails or. So once that gets going or gets done and we can make a little more of a assessment on it.
She typically does our annual inspection in deer season. So it's kinda like right up her alley for her to like.
She, she usually waits until one comes in, then comes in, visits me.
She always comes on the business time. Well, we do expect it, but yeah.
You know, I think so, I'm not sure. Otherwise, I believe that is all I have for you folks right now. Otherwise, I believe that is all I have for you folks right now.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Um.
Rescue point on.
So I've had a couple of serious conversations, and I've looked through this F A Q from the Treasury. In the last couple of weeks, I've come across a couple of options to use the money that I wanted to bring forward. The first one is um, I've. From what I can tell, I've got the revenue loss calculator correct. Um, based on what the F A Qs were from the Treasury. To determine if the city had any revenue loss from twenty nineteen. And this uh, calculation that I gave you guys basically. Boils down to what could be what you were supposed to use. To make that calculation, it had to include all your general fund minus any, like in two thousand twenty, we couldn't use our CARES money. It's minus your your liquor store transfers or any transfers to offset your general fund. Um, your actual total liquor store revenues. Uh, wastewater, but not water. And we can use our, any of our recreation funds, so our campground and our health parks. So I totaled those up, there was a growth adjustment calculation in the calculation that you have to prove. So, if we had no loss, that's all I'm gonna tell you guys. And I kind of figured we wouldn't, but I knew that this has been something. Um, the council wanted me to narrow down, and I sent this to um Miller McDonald as well to have another pair of eyes to look at it. Um, I haven't heard back from John Rosso yet, because I just sent it to him on Friday. But when I started this calculation, um, I tweaked it to its final resting place that I provided to you guys, my first calculation. We still had a growth of like thirty seven thousand dollars, so now it's even more, because I had to take water out of. The budget or out of the um, the formula. So I think it's safe to say that there is not going to be any free money out of the American Rescue Act that has any. That doesn't have any restrictions on it for the city. Questions? Okay, so that's the bad news. Um, the potential good news, and again, I want to know this down with our financial advisors too. Is that there is um, a clause in the F A Qs from the Treasury that states that. Let me get it out so I don't read it wrong. That the fundings uh, could be used to prevent and respond to crimes, support public safety in the community. What my thought was. Is that we take a portion of the American Rescue Act funding. And use it to offset our police department budget for two thousand twenty-two. Providing an option C in this case and lowering the levy um, a little bit, not a ton, but it's something. It it is, it is, um. The reply back that I got from John Rosso was, he still believes that the city would have to prove. That it lost its public um, safety, its police department to COVID. Now, when I look through the F A Qs on this particular um, statement, I don't see that, I don't read that. I probably want to get a little bit more legal advise on this. But that's my first suggestion to lower our twenty-two levy. Like I said, it's not significant, but it is a start. And it might look a little better in December, um, if I'm allowed to. So I was um, gonna provide you guys that information and look for a little feedback and. If you would like me to do some more time on that.
Yes. I think so. I mean, because we also have. You were at the ambulance meeting.
Yeah.
Then, I know they're talking quite a bit about where to spend money, townships, everything else.
Right.
And. If we can use it for, I I think, I guess I don't see a problem with spending it for the police department, using it for that.
Basically, my argument to Miller McDonald and for the reason of putting it in there is, um. We need to rehire all of our staff again. It'd be different if we didn't, if we only lost one of our police officers, but we lost both of them. And it is not up to us, the judge, if it was for COVID or not, because that's a, you know, privacy thing. Um, did the city make an argument? I don't know, I mean, Andy moved on to live in a different area, you know. He took a different job in another department. Um, we all know Jace left for his own personal reasons, and we don't know what those are. So, what we do need to do is we need to restack the department. Otherwise, we don't have one. And we've already worked on our payroll budget for that department, and we've kept wages at a high point of the scale. So that we could get a department staff. Normally. You know, we might hire somebody a little bit lower on that scale, which still can, we could do, but. It's really hard to get law enforcement now, regardless of what they paid. And it's gonna be really difficult to try to hire somebody out of the gate, even with a little experience. Way of the government or scale. If I get any more feedback from Miller McDonald, then I I think I'm gonna, I'm gonna put this in front of our, our legal attorney too. Just because I want to make sure I'm not. I really don't want the city to earmark something then.
Yeah.
And then get slapped by the Treasury.
Nobody wants to be the first group.
Well, it's it's interesting because it's, can you, could you say that it's a public health emergency? Maybe. It's a public safety emergency, yes. Um. I just don't know how much the Treasury is gonna care about the city black duck population. Eight hundred some people, they're marking fifteen thousand dollars of the eighty-four they're giving us. You know, compared to a county or a very large metro area that has. You know, a million dollars in American Rescue.
What what's that percentage of that, I'm not really. What's fifteen percent of eighty-seven thousand?
No, I would, I'm recommending fifteen thousand.
Yeah, fifteen thousand. Out of the eighty-seven thousand?
It's eighty, it'll be about eighty-four.
Okay, so fifteen thousand on eighty-four thousand, we're earmarking for the police department.
That's what I'm gonna recognize.
Okay.
Yeah. And we can put it in the twenty-two budget.
And that'll come up, you're you're figuring that'll help with our levy that we passed.
Yes, that you, the preliminary, because as as um, I stated in September, you can lower, but you can increase. I'm looking for ways to lower.
Yeah.
Because I believe right now the proposed was a seventeen percent increase and adding fifteen. Of the rescue money into the twenty-two levy would only make it a twelve percent increase over twenty-one. So it's dropping that percent increase over twenty-one, like five percent. It's a start.
It is a start, but. People are gonna fall off their chair when they say seventeen percent. Yeah, I'm gonna have a game with that.
The only, the only catch twenty-two with doing this, and I've had this conversation with some of the townships too, is. It's a one-time thing, thank you Max, and next year we still have the budget to go through. So, are you making it easy this next coming year, or you're trying to make it a little easier? Knowing that in two years, it's still gonna need to be there, potentially higher, I don't know. Um. When you don't have the money.
But, so last year, you didn't raise, no, you didn't raise taxes at all. So, so, okay, so, so now we're gonna go seventeen percent high, we're gonna raise the tax seventeen percent. So, people are gonna, like I said, it's gonna be, people are gonna go. I know, so if we could drop that down, much as we could drop it down this year, we still raise the tax, we're gonna have. But. Some way to slice that in, maybe gradually go back up where we need, we need the money to go for the city.
Right, these are the things that keep me up at night. Or 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 to drive them to not live in the city, correct?
That's what, that's what I'm saying, you can't. Seventy percent, that's a lot of money.
Tell me about it.
I mean, for me, it's only a hundred bucks. On my tab. But that's a lot of money.
Yeah. First case scenario, my advisors tell me that I wouldn't do that. You know? The problem is that we're gonna be using it for probably payroll. You know? It'd be different if it was like the CARES money, some fire department in St. Minnesota last year used it to buy armor radios. They actually needed the equipment, obviously, that, you know, doesn't finance that.
Full cameras?
Well, they had to pay all that back, state, because it wasn't a, it wasn't eligible expense, that's. That's why I want to make sure.
Yeah.
Gotcha, you know, we kind of have a sign off, more than my recommendation, so.
So that's a, that's, yeah, that's one spot.
Right. But I've been through this F A Q, and I I honestly can't think of any other. Way to use that money in the general fund. Based on what we need money for.
Does it have to get spent?
Uh, by twenty-four, two thousand twenty-four. I mean, truthfully, my my biggest recommendation is that we use this money for water and wastewater. It's not big, and it's not enough money to redo infrastructure under streets. But it would be a very good investment on our lift stations that are hurting. A lot, especially the one on Oscar, the one's getting cleaned out almost weekly, as you guys were telling me. And every time we have that thing.
Yeah.
Hey, you know, repaired or or serviced, it costs us seven to eight thousand dollars. So if we can get a lift station fully updated and repaired or, you know, improved upon, especially that one. That's where everything ends up before it pulls all the way out of town. It'd be a good investment in the city, and it would, it would benefit everyone. It's not a road, it's not water and sewer lines for anybody, but it's something that benefits everyone.
We wanna start doing every road, every sewer.
A lot more than eighty-four thousand dollars. It's just not enough to do, to make any, a substantial dent in what we have to fix. Well, that's kind of where I'm at with the.
Yeah, I kind of like that, that lift station. That's something, I know Chris has thought that.
Alright.
These are things that we're going to put together for our next week. And I did not get it for your council meeting, but I'll have more information for you definitely by the November workstation, work session. So that in the December um, truth and taxation meeting, if it ends up being able to be lowered, that a portion of it. You guys can revise that. That's, that's my goal.
Okay. Getting it in my head, absolutely, yeah.
Any other questions on that?
I don't, there's, well.
Um, the Black Duck Stump Jumpers Public Parking Lot, they've been given the go-ahead to start their um, construction on that lot. I imagine they're in between seasons right now, so I'm waiting to hear back from the president to see if they're gonna. Get that rolling before winter, I imagine they want to. Um, the city has made, has been made whole on the acquisition of the property. So that is back in the revolving loan fund. Um, the stump jumpers portion of the acquisition uh, has been invoiced out, and I'm waiting for payment on that, which is like five thousand dollars. There's still money from the grant that is um, still gonna have to have a K P request from the state. Once the parking lot is done. The materials and everything, I have to submit um, their timelines, what in-kind materials they purchased, their in-kind labor. And then a finished um, picture of the parking lot to the state, so they know the project is complete before they go. Sign off on the last bit of funding that was awarded. But as of right now, the biggest chunk was the acquisition of the property, so we're whole in what we can get at this time. Any questions? Then we're down to the redevelopment project, and the reason that Steve's here um, is to further discuss. Um, his departments uh, see, you know. Offer to, you know, do more services for reconstruction plans for the project. Um, I couldn't. Couldn't speak to all of the questions at the council meeting, so that's why I asked Steve to be here. If there's more that needs to be discussed about the project, we can do that as well, but at the least, this, I don't. So he.
You want, and just shoot out questions or?
Your sales pitch.
My sales pitch, should I give you some, although I can give you a background of how we got to where we are?
It's right.
So the original project or the original agreement we had with the city was to provide dismantling and demolition drawings for the removal of those three buildings. And we had a two-part thing, first we provided an estimate that went to the, with the grant application, we did that in January. Then that got approved and came back to us in April. And after April, then we focused on the the uh, dismantling drawings. And through the course of the summer, learned a variety of things about those buildings. Um, primarily what we learned has to do with how those three buildings are attached to. These two buildings on the south and to the theater building on the north. These two buildings are pretty obvious how they attach and what they do, and. We don't have to do anything to restructure these buildings once the, the, these two buildings, once those buildings are torn down. What we. What we had in question was, how do those buildings attach to the theater? We discovered that. Forty-eight main, the building to the north, just south of the theater, attaches to the original theater. There's, there's actually a gap, there's a space between the buildings. Um, we broke a hole through the the wall, we found this gap, and then there's a wall of the original theater. Now, what we didn't know, and what we really had a hard time determining is, the theater had an addition put on the front and on the back of it. And how were those additions put down and attached to forty-eight main, the building to the south? Um. What we discovered is that through dimensions and everything, without knocking any walls down. The addition on the front is wider than the original theater, the addition on the back is wider than the original theater. But we couldn't determine where the theater's wall was and where forty-eight main's wall was. So what we found out is on September, is that we got into the theater building, we got the contractors to join me. And we crawled all around and looked in wherever we could look, what we found is the addition to the front, the addition to the back. That when they added those additions on, they just built right up to the wall of forty-eight main. That when they added those additions on, they just built right up to the wall of forty-eight main. They didn't put a wall there, they just applied their finishes to the forty-eight main's wall. And they did that on the front and on the back. The other thing we found is that, that, that gap that we found originally. It's about two feet wide at the front of the building and it tapers down to nothing at the back of the building. So it's, they're skewed from each other. So at the end of September, the bad news that we found was that if you pull forty-eight main down. There's no wall on the theater at the front, there's no wall of, of the theater at the back. They don't have a wall, it's forty-eight main's wall. That's bad enough, we found one more thing that was when the original theater was built. Or I should say, when the original theater was added on to the back. In order to take off that back wall and add on, they put a beam across the theater. Because that wall used to support the roof, they took the wall away, they put a beam in its place. That beam is, is bearing on the north wall of the theater at one end. And on forty-eight main's wall on the south end. So if we take forty-eight main's wall away, not only open up the front addition, the back addition. And now that beam has nothing to support on the south end. Compromise the roof of the entire theater. So we found bad news at the end of September in three locations. So, going to my proposal, my proposal at, at, at the beginning of the month was to. Do design work to reconstruct the front addition. South wall, the back addition, south wall, and restructure the beam, all having to do with the movie theater. Not the three buildings we're demoing. That's why it's additional services beyond what our original agreement was and not part of yours. There's my.
So how do you propose that? How do you propose to, you're gonna tear down forty-eight main, how do you propose to hold the beam up?
We'll, we'll have to do some type of temporary supports within the, the, uh, structure. We'll have to take the wall down and then come out with a new supporting column and put it in place. On that south end of that beam.
But. That's gonna be. On the city's property.
Okay, so that, that's why I brought up the whole idea of the two buildings skewed from each other. Because they're skewed from each other and there're walls and walls and no walls. I don't know where in that whole thing, where's the property law? Is it on the wall of forty-eight main, is it on, is it on the movie theater or is it somewhere in between? That's, that's a whole nother issue. You bring up a good point in that the beam does, everything comes this way of the original wall of forty-eight main. Where, when, where is that property law? Maybe a new property line needs to be established, this side. And, and figure it out. Even if we, even if we take forty-eight main away, what, what I discovered is when you went in the movie theater. You, you, it slopes down, the floor of the movie theater up at the screen is lower than the floor of forty-eight main. And then there's a door you go through and you come out for emergency exit. When you go through that, the door and that little hallway of that addition, you can see the foundation wall of forty-eight main. On the inside of the movie theater. So, that tells me of that and some other things tells me that if that wall goes away. There is no wall on the movie theater at all. But along with that, to your point, where's the property law? Is it on that side of forty-eight main's wall, which would be inside the movie theater? Or is it on this side of forty-eight main's wall, which would have been inside the demo building? I don't know. We're, we're just concerned that. You know, when we, we wanna demo these buildings, we, we can't harm the structures that are adjacent. Well, it was fine on this end, but we could really see what's going on here. There, we couldn't quite see it, and now what we found is that. Originally, we thought the two walls were skewed from each other and there was two walls. But that only occurs at the original old movie theater. Not on the two additions at the front and back.
So, when you take down the front and the back, you're gonna take down the front of their wall?
Yeah, you'll be seeing them making popcorn.
That's what I'm saying. And we know the awning is all.
And the awning was, that's, that's minor compared to all the rest of it.
And that wall.
That's, okay, so there's, there's another thought. So if the wall, the north wall of forty-eight main, we just has left in place. That could happen, but right now, that wall is standing there and the roof structure supports the top of it and tipping over. It's just a wall, you take the rest of that away, there's nothing holding that wall up, it can just tip over. One way or another.
That's just the foundation.
From the floor down, we're filling with the, fill it up the basement, but from the floor up. It's just standing there without any horizontal supporting to keep it from tipping over. It's just flapping in the breeze.
It's not attached to the west.
It's, it's kind of attached to prevent water from draining down, but it isn't structurally.
That's just the middle part, not the front.
Actually, all of it. Right now, that entire wall front to back is a structural member of forty-eight main. And, and meaning, meaning the floor structure and the roof structure attached to the wall structure. To hold it all up, if we take the roof and the floor away, now the wall's just standing there, kinda like a fence.
The theater's got three walls.
The theater itself is good, the old original building, we know that because it was standing all by itself before anything else was built around it. But back addition and the front addition is, only got three walls, we have three more. Well, yeah, yeah, they, they literally put the sheet rock onto forty-eight main's wall.
Okay, that, you can, you, you explained a lot, because I was talking to Max one day, I'm like.
I, yeah, and I could give you guys the plans that, that Steve has put together, but I, I can't, I can't. Translate as eloquently as he can.
We went, well, we went through, I don't know how many times I've been over there, but up and down and around and measuring and. And it took a lot of head scratching to figure out why our numbers don't match up, why. And we, we figured out the gap, we figured out there's a, it's wide at the front and narrow at the back, but we'd always assumed. That they had a wall and forty-eight main had a wall. And it was just a gap, um, there in space, but they didn't have a wall.
I, one, one time I heard that they didn't even know if there was two walls there.
We, we did find that there's two walls.
But yeah, but some, a while back, it was like, well, better knock a hole in it, see if they have.
So we did, so, we were, we, we, we picked a spot, we thought would be safe. Based on everything we measured, and we were right, it was safe. But had we gone right inside the front of the building and blasted a wall there, we would have been right through the popcorn machine. Or whatever's in that corner, but literally, that's where they made the popcorn.
So they, the owners of the theater did give Steve permission to punch a hole in the back section to see.
We, we could, but, yeah, I'll do it from their side, this.
Yeah, but not the other way.
Yeah, but I, I know what I'm gonna find, because I can see the foundation. When, when, when you stand in the back doorway, open the door and look here on the inside and the outside, and inside the outside. Then you can see it, but before, when we didn't see both inside and outside, it looks as though there's a building and there's a building. But it's not that way.
So, on the, on the, on the money side to it, the, the grant loan from D. Only covers demolition. That's what it's, that's what its purpose is, it doesn't cover reconstruction. So, then several conversations with many place, many people, including the owners, the development corps still wants to be. You know, part of this process and this project in one way, shape or form, um. Potentially even financially too, what I'm trying to do is I'm trying to find funding. To make sure the theater is still here.
Can we use COVID funds for that?
So, it's, it's a good, it's a good question, Joe, the city can't use its COVID funding. But there is funding that theater owners would apply for. The problem is, is that that run of funding that is accessible for our region right now. Is being governed by the Northwest Minnesota Foundation and that funding. Had to be applied for back in May and the foundation did, but they applied for it with. The intention on a big portion of that going to the new VA, um, building. The, I can't remember, VA, yeah. Thank you, and, um, and then there was one other project and I can't remember where it is, but. So their, their funding that they're receiving for, um, from the state. Is, is, is pretty much called for, not only that, but they also didn't apply for the funding outside of the mid area.
Yeah, they're doing a behavior call.
Thank you. Yeah, that's right, I know those two things, so, so yes. There could be some other funding that theater could apply for as the business owner. Um, with the help of myself or the city to get that funding applied for, um. The question is, is that that funding's gonna be a grant or is it gonna be a loan? If it's a loan, the theater really doesn't have anything more that they can squeeze out, you know? Um, like I said earlier, the development corps is potentially considering still helping this project. Um, financially, there's been conversation at those board meetings. The city is gonna need to make a decision, cause we've already started this mall rolling. If they're going to fund what Steve will need, if we, if the city needs reconstruction plans. I mean, can they do it without construction plans? Can you hire a contractor and say, go do it? I know Steve would roll his eyes and say, I wouldn't do that.
The contractors that we have already, that is a.
Yeah, but they wouldn't even know where to start. And then, and then, in addition to that, you know, pay for that reconstruction. So it can happen, it, it, it's feasible, you can reconstruct two walls and move a beam.
But right now, we're sitting with. Properties owned by the city.
We have to. And I will just like to note that any of the funding that is. You know, part, a part of this, well, this and any reconstruction is not reimbursable. That's why I wanted to start with that conversation, this wouldn't be something completely entirely out of this spot.
Was he assessed them?
Yes. We're assessed us free of three buildings. And so this is, I'm sorry.
How long, uh, how, at least, what are these, we can about hearing this now, what are the?
We can't do it until next. Yeah, right now, the, the, the month that they've discussed is.
Sometimes they don't come off until.
To, to go on with that possible schedule, I, I mentioned it's a dismantling and a demolition. And I say it in that sense because they're not just gonna come in with heavy equipment, knock these buildings down and carry them off. What they have to do is essentially blast a hole in the back. And they'll dismantle the wall in the back, thanks Steve, I'm sorry. So that they, in part of the floor, so that they can come in with equipment and start filling the basements with dirt. They'll fill the basements with dirt with small equipment, and then work their way out, now they'll start taking apart the roof, piece by piece. Before they can push the walls in. So it isn't just, it is dismantling in pieces and cutting and taking parts away. Rather than just knocking them down and hauling them on.
Are they taking the floors out? I mean.
The basement floor, it's some concrete, they'll break it up. Into pieces so it will drain, but they will then. And the basement walls on the, the side of the north side of the street and this side will all be left in place because. By taking them out, they'll, they'll compromise all three buildings and the street out front, so. Yeah, the, the, the interior basement walls will be removed, so a building could go in, in there.
So in your opinion. Cause you work with a lot of contractors. Without. Reconstruction plans, would a contractor be able to walk in there and do this job?
A contractor wouldn't, not that they wouldn't be able to, they wouldn't, because then they would be liable. It's, it's, it's a licensed engineer that has to put a stamp on there that has been engineered to hold the wall up, to hold the beam up. Do all that, say, okay, now build it to these.
And so this is what, this nine thousand one seventy is for these, these plan.
So I just have a question, oh, you're still thinking, now this is really weird. You're still thinking you're gonna leave them, beams are still gonna stick outside of the theater then? I mean, so, um.
Yes, and here's why. It isn't your typical beam that you would think of, in fact, and that's why it's. There's a beam on the inside of the building and there's a beam up above the roof on the outside of the building. And you can go up on the roof and you can see it, and then there's these cables that are not cables, there's rods that go down, connected to, and that's what's supporting the roof. So, yes, we would in fact leave that all in place and just give it something to support on the south end.
Oh, where it works out, if that has to be there and we go ahead and put a. Down the road, I mean, to build a building, that. And columns are gonna be there.
Everything that we do would be exposed in, in plain view until another building gets built. That would partially cover it, but the, whatever gets built will not be built up against it.
How much would it cost to bulldoze a theater and then just?
A lot, right now, the estimate that Carl Domner provided to, um, one of the development corps. Uh, members, uh, as much as what it would cost to take it down. So, take the same amount of money that we're already spending for the three and double it.
Just, just for the one building?
Yep, because it's a much bigger building.
Are we planning on building two more buildings or are you waiting for contractors to move one of those? That's space for retail, but what was the plan?
The plan would be for that, that space of those three buildings to have one building. And take those three lots, combine them as one parcel and sell it as one.
As just a parcel or even, are you putting a building in there?
No, no, the city would, ultimately, the city would flip everything. Property to a developer to build, the city will not review the building.
So i- is it safe to say this would probably be the end of it until it was flipped? Or no? After this, after the plans are done, then we have to have somebody come in and actually do the work?
Yes.
Okay, and what does that look like?
What does that mean?
Financially, what is that, what's that, having them taken down, demolition part? Financially, what is that? What's that? Having them taken down, demolition part.
Oh, um, the estimate on the demolition, I think, is a hundred and twenty thousand, the whole three buildings. Roughly.
That's fine. I just, that's about, I just.
The, the total amount of money from deed more was a hundred and sixty four thousand dollars.
Okay.
That is to do acquisition, uh, mitigation, removal and fill in. That's how much money we have. That's how much has been estimated. Anything above and beyond that?
We still have to pay to have a reconstruction, the theater reconstructed, whatever it costs.
Oh, I get that. Yep, that's what we're, what we have right now.
Yeah.
Yep, I'm following that part.
So now you're up to speed on the money.
Yep, I just needed a, a bigger picture. A clearer picture.
And then I. Yeah, and I apologize. And I just need to remind Max, you guys can't officially approve this amendment tonight. Gives you more information to consider on the eighth.
Yeah, you described it.
Well, it, it wasn't, we didn't discover this in just, in one section. It was discovered over a number of visits and a number of months and it really helped to get into that theater building.
I'm glad you came by because I was talking to Max one day and I said, man, this, I can't believe, you know. And he goes, well, go over there and look. I go.
It's a mess. It needs to come down.
Yes, it's past time. So if that'll be on our agenda.
Sure, no problem.
Let's say.
No, city sales tax. Yeah.
There it is.
I don't have a whole lot more to, um, report on the city sales tax. I, um, Mike and I did have a meeting with, uh. So what's up? And she came and we. Thank you. We met in detail about, um, the regional significance. You might remember that when Kurt was here at the last council meeting, he asked for your input. We talked in detail about other things that we could add to the regional significance argument for the city sales tax. And she's putting that together right now. A big portion of it was, um, helping the trails, um, the walking trails, issues that it's having, um, expanding and helping the campground because that is a big piece of it. Um, I've provided to her, um, the the long range plan that was done for country park when the county was involved back in the late nineties when the joint powers was, provides the campground, uh, uh, contribution from the county every year as well as what, um, what was spent to build and construct the trail as it is. Not, not any acquisition or anything like that, but just construction. And she's working on, uh, looking at maybe updating those numbers to see what it would cost to, um, a big picture of what we need for sales.
That would be like wayside rest stuff too.
It would be wayside rest set too. She actually strongly suggested that. We had more conversation about, you know, the road needs serious improving, the lighting needs improving, um. Mike had mentioned he wants to, you know, add to the playground.
Get a camera. Whole camera.
We actually do need a wayside rest. Wait in there.
Oh, the one on the corner?
Yeah.
Molly Ann did that two summers ago. The brown one you're talking about. Yeah. She did it the same year. Is it just getting paid in?
Yeah, some of the, you know, the, that's regional significance, you know.
Oh, yes.
Big like that. So it's on roadside attractions, USA or whatever. If that website is.
That's in campus. All right, now I can move to the website if you guys are ready. So the last time we not, uh, discussed this, um, Amanda provided a presentation for you to review with two options. Option one was to keep the all in one option of the, of the website. Option two was to create individual sites. When everything was done with the presentation, council requested some feedback from the chamber of commerce because they have some, some input. I provided that same, uh, presentation to, uh, some of the members at the meeting last Wednesday and the costs, um, gave them the feedback from the city council as well as the liquor store and how it would, um, benefit a couple of the entities in the city and really call out the campground, um, which was a big request. Um, what the feedback was that I got from the chamber. They, they, they went back and forth a couple of times. They were a little skittish about spending any additional money. But after the conversation was done, they agreed they'd love to be on their own. Um, knowing that the format would be very similar to all of the pages. Um, so where we're at with the city is, the city needs to decide if they want to keep their all in one or if they wanna do individuals themselves. So we have a city, well, of course, pond.
You know, the pond one.
The pond definitely wants their own. Yep. Um, or we do city golf parks campground all in one, leaving the pond out separately. We could do two websites. You follow me? Um, that would kind of protect some of the costs of the golf course. But in addition to that decision, the chamber also agreed to also put a thousand dollars to reconstructing the city website.
I'm wrong. I saw, I read that.
So they wanna see the city's website reconstructed just as much as they want their own done. So that was a real positive on Wednesday. Um, so what I guess will need, the city will need to decide on November eighth is, you know, how that's gonna work and if they wanna approve that, that proposal from clinical.
You would say the city, the golf course and the campground would be not installed as well?
No, the campground would still wanna, you'd still wanna keep the campground under the city's site. So you could do, I'm just throwing options out there, Lori. You could do a number of things. You could keep an all in one that has a couple of entities together for a city and let the pond have their own. You can keep the city campground separate or together, excuse me, let the golf course have their own too. And the pond has. So does the city would own three websites. But the only one that, the only stuff that would be controlled by the city's drawal fund would be, you know, water, wastewater, cemetery, council, campground, those types of entities, ordinances. Liquor store would have their own. Of course, it would have their own. The prices themselves are kind of like an all in car. Correct.
I was kind of thinking with the golf course on, should have their own. City have. But you did bring up an interesting point, is it easy expense on the golf course? Isn't that something they wanna go, wanna do in the future? You can change it after a year? What do you think they benefit? You know, I mean, they're looking, we're looking at hiring someone to be a director out there in campus. I, I sure don't wanna, I don't wanna hamstring them right out the gate and say, I want you to promote the heck out of this place, but don't get electric.
They can.
No way.
Or is it, is it just, anybody can request changes? So they just don't have hands on.
Cause you don't need somebody with a thumbnail on.
You know, when they, when you search, when somebody says, hey, I wanna go golfing in Black Duck. Be nice if the golf course popped right up instead of.
It does. It just sends you to the link of our website where you can get a link.
It's still very hard to search. It's kind of a funky one.
I just looked up Black Duck Golf and operated the Black Duck Golf course, gave them the address, review and.
Maybe if it's up, if the whole website is all updated and new and refreshed and everything, it might change it a lot.
That's, that's an element of it. But as it comes to, like Amanda said, as it pertains to things like search engines and where people's main searches are, it's easier for the recipients to find exactly where they need to go and what they're looking for on the first search rather than. I mean, the campground itself is completely varied.
Yeah, that's the other point is golf course, if you're gonna get, you know, they're gonna get hit with this budget. But they have to try and, and corral. So how much would they be looking at on their own?
Well, the production estimate is a thousand twenty dollars. So what you could do, what the city could do is take that money from the chamber and put it on the golf course reconstruction. Is you can decide where you want to put that money, right? Then the only thing that the golf courses budget would have to handle or would be the monthly development fee. Because, you know, developing the pond's website is gonna be, you know, easier.
And then the city's website, can a for one website? I'm looking at the individual samples. Oh, okay.
And, I don't know. I heard the proposals. I kinda wanna go with a person that knows marketing. I know they're trying to sell something too, but at the same time.
But wasn't she for the all in one? Or did I remember that?
I don't think she recommended either style. I think what she did was Amanda provided options to consider. And she's recommending in her way, but I can tell you that your liquor store was very adamant of wanting their own.
So the liquor store and the pond will have their own. It'll be one.
It'd be one.
Oh, you'll go one on that. So our separate businesses you might want to do.
It's still one space.
All right.
And if all the calendars are searching really for golf courses, they have their own. Didn't have to jump through all the booths. I could see it being beneficial for them making more.
What it does is it gives them a really handy way to advertise, use that platform and push it out. Instead of, you know.
Having to submit for changes or updates or sales or promotions or.
Okay, I remember just up on my.
So pretty much individualized.
I need to download all my stuff. I'll have this on the agenda then as well.
Please.
That basically takes care of your old business. I have no new business. Unless I miss something and someone asks for it.
No, and I was approached by someone. I was approached by the person who would like to purchase this.
Oh, well then, good. You wanna move to that level of your agenda then?
Yes, to that level of the agenda.
I was approached by this person as well. I'm not gonna name any names because I'm not going to say that this is even gonna become, come to fruition. But I was approached by an outside party. Apparently there is a parcel south of his, um, mother's, um, place on this, on Fourth Street Southeast that the Black Duck or HRA purchased at some point. I can't tell you how or when because I can't go back that far. Can you?
Pretty close.
I don't know if it went on a forfeiture and the HRA picked it up at that point. I really just don't know.
Uh, it was actually donated, I believe, by earning club.
Okay.
And, uh, fire department used the house that was there for training.
Okay. Very good. All the way at the end of some of these, Fourth Street some of these. Down that way. Past Max. Uh, it's on the east side of the road. So you wouldn't even realize it because of the house that's next to it though, that there's another lot there. Um, it's only what, point eight acres? And there's four streets right away and everything is planned around it. Anyway, um, the ju, the, the person said that they were interested in purchasing it. He wanted to know more about it. Wanted to know possible cess valley. It hasn't had any sales, any taxes on it. I could pull it up from the county. Um, it was roughly estimated at like thirty one hundred dollars. Um, my recommendation to this person was to draft a purchase agreement and approach the city council.
So the city owns it?
Yeah, the HRA does.
Okay, the HRA. Weren't we looking to buy property to build on in the future?
I know the development corps has looked at it, at buying, purchasing parcels to build houses on. Yes. Um, I don't believe.
So and some of the problem with is location of the lot is because there's no sewer or water on that lot.
But they just be adding that lot to their.
Probably to their existing. Property. So.
I can't say that anything would be, would be.
I, I wouldn't seriously doubt it, but.
It would be a little bit more tax based back into the city if you sold it back to this person if they wanted it, that would be. I mean, I don't know if it's a buildable lot.
It puts a little bit, it could put a little bit into the HRAs. Thank you, Paul, as well. Plus, it's been sitting there. You know, if somebody was paying taxes on it for the last probably twenty years, you know, that kind of adds up to something. I mean, cause we're not getting anything for it now. And we haven't for the last, like I said, twenty years.
Twenty years. So the reason I'm bringing this to the board is just so that you're aware this could come across. I don't know if it's gonna come out or not, but.
I'll have a thought. I'll see where.
You know the person? It doesn't sound like from what you guys were discussing that you'd be against it.
No.
I'm sure at the point it was, you know, the HRA thought back then that this would be a good thing to put a house on, but. No. And it's the. And it's the H R C that wants to get lots.
So, anything else?
Not for me.
Paige did a heck of a job with Overdrive. I stopped in, saw that.
Yeah, I think when I stopped in at like noon, they had over thirty two people in here by then. But really got a lot of, it really got a lot of legs. And Gretchen from United Way said it actually had, um, a better, um, reception up here than it did in the one in the Midgee. Uh, we have a bunch of them in the safe right now, um, but they're gonna, whatever's, uh, new is going to Black Duck Toys for Kids. And then, um, I think United Way is gonna take some of them back. And they're gonna get redistributed. Uh, C R C might take some too. That's good.
All this time, we're taking a motion to adjourn. There you go, you got one and two. Everybody seems in favor, backing up.
Are we gonna leave?
That's a joke. Yeah.
How the, how the city cross the road, you know?
I do not.
Because they have to go flush a car.